Here by call to order the Wednesday, December 20th, 2023 North Atlantic Regional School Committee Open Meeting. Hello. First day on the agenda is audience sharing. Do we have any audience sharing? Okay, moving on. Action on the minutes of November 15th, 2023. Right here, a motion.
I make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes of November 15th, 2023.
Do you hear that?
Second.
Okay, moved by Chris, seconded by Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay, educational policy, none, new business.
So, Selvi Oil was going to join us this evening, but she had a passing unexpectedly in her family. So she will be at the January meeting. Very excited to formally introduce her to the school committee at the January session. And also this evening, we are very excited to introduce Michelle Kaelin. Welcome, Michelle. Michelle is the Career Exploration and Innovation Leader. And Sean, I'm not sure if you want to give a brief introduction.
Yeah, we're very excited to have Michelle join us. She has been with us for about three and a half weeks and has joined onto our leadership team and joined the several kind of standing committees we're on and been doing the work of like inventorying what our current practices so far and then developing a network of other career exploration professionals, including our very own Karen, to deepen our interest into that work and then start to build up the things where we could improve on how we support our kids with our career development. So we're really excited to see how that goes.
All right, welcome.
And also would just like to thank Principal Bevan and Dr. Reinhold for leading the search committee. They were there. They were very successful and we have a great person now on our team, so we're very excited.
Michelle brings with her a wealth of experience in this area, coming from the college. And also a kind of a network and a rolodex of people who are productive. Really pumped about it.
Great.
And usually the newest hire has a 15-minute opening remarks. But for you, well, you know, because you were such a great hire, we'll just hold on.
Pass on them.
Okay, English Department presentation.
Sure, so my great pleasure to introduce Jane Beattar, who is our English Department Chair. And so let me start presenting to you, Jane.
So it's nice to see you again. It's been, this is a little different setup.
I know, a little disorienting.
If you want to stand over there, too.
Wherever you want to be.
Wherever you're comfortable.
I'm not really sure, but it is nice to be here. Two years ago, we were spread out in the auditorium. Maybe I'm not really sure, but I remember sharing a topic that was up debate at the time in the English Department. And that was just listening to a book reading. And so I thought, I come here and I've done this many times. And of course, I get a little nervous and what can I share? There's nothing new going on, it's the same old job. But of course, there's always stuff going on. And so I'm here to share some of the new stuff, some of what we're talking about, some of what we're toiling over, some of the tough questions and decisions we have to make very quickly. Because I do love talking and teaching and educating and sharing with you. I know my time is limited, but so I set up a little table over here. I know your time is limited as well, and you probably take zero breaks. So you may not make your way over to that table, but the stuff I can't really talk about, but I want to share with you and showcase and highlight is over there on that table. So a quick overview of the English Department. You have my whole sign.
Oh, dude. Oh, I'm sorry, Jane.
I, I, sorry.
When I jump ahead and I'll go.
Well, I could probably work from this, but the new one's a bunch.
Okay.
So I have to tell you.
You can vamp a little bit.
I have to tell you, see, you see how brief they are? That was a skeletal.
Okay.
The skeletal one I turned in last week. And Sean looked at it, saw all the white space, and he put those pictures on.
Sean, do you want us to go to the next subject while you find it and then we can come back?
Sure, we can do that. Yeah, I apologize, we'll.
No, that's fine, take your time.
It's my mistake.
If I shared it with you.
Got it, okay.
No, this is not, this is not.
We'll go to the next one and then we'll come back to you.
We're flexible.
Yep, thank you, I'm sorry.
So legislative update. So a few weeks ago, we had Senator Kennedy, State Representative Kilcoyne and Donahue visit Algonquin Regional High School. They were interested to actually tour the facility and talk about some of the opportunities students have for learning. We spent a lot of time in the woodshop and the robotics room and the metal room, which they were very surprised to see. And we talked about, you know, again, with our new position, with Michelle taking on a new position, talking about innovative pathways and really thinking about Chapter 74 and some of those other potential opportunities. You know, as you all know, we have a business concentration, so we talked about the business concentration. And again, how can we use the programs that we have and expand them to become Chapter 74 programs? And Chapter 70 program, four programs actually bring us more money per pupil. And we already have them, so that was a good conversation. We also talked about Chapter 70 funding, special education reimbursement, transportation reimbursement, the normal types of requests and advocacy that the committee advocates for each year. And it was a, it was a great meeting, was nice to connect. We also toured the athletic complex, so it was great for them to see that project. And overall, it was a great meeting. One of the conversations that Principal Bevan and I had was inviting them back to the school committee meeting so they can hear directly from you. Usually, we're invited to the town's presentation, but I think it's important them to come to the school committee and actually hear directly from the school committee. So that is something we'll work on in the months of January and February. And that is the legislative update.
Okay.
We are ready. Again, I apologize, that was a curveball, Jane.
The pictures are nice. I tend to go pretty basic. In fact, sometimes I don't even have the slides. But the English Department is a large department. And something that's unique about us is kids have to take English every semester of every year in high school, all four years. So it's a graduation requirement. There's 15 English teachers, 16 courses. Three of those courses are the year-long core ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade courses. And the other 13 are electives and AP courses. In terms of updating you on some new changes, we've opened up some of our writing electives to grade nine students and grade 10 students. For many years, it was just 11 and 12. The young kids don't always have room in their schedule, but there are a few in these writing classes. And then we're hoping, we're proposing a new elective next year. And we're in a sort of early talks with Sean about this, and it's exciting because it's a co-taught elective with an English teacher and a science teacher, environmental studies teacher called Environmental Humanities, co-taught by English and Science. And so we're excited to propose that coming up really soon and to see how many kids sign up for it. Some updates also, before I get to the work we're doing with students in the classroom that's new, I always want to share with you the work of the Algonquin Writing Center, the kids and the advisors, teachers and the harbinger. Because those kids are among the many at Algonquin whose work goes outside the four walls of this building. They attend conferences, they write papers and do research, they present their work at these conferences and workshops that are highly attended. They attend workshops by Boston Globe reporters and the Spotlight Team, and they get their work published. And actually, Cass was recently just awarded a journalism award for a piece that she co-wrote. An exo-coming here. Right, Cass, is it a review?
It was reviewed.
A review. So they attended a national convention, Journalism Education Association and the New England Classic Press Association. They attended, 10 kids went with two teachers, the advisors, Lindsay Copens and Michelle Shepherd. And they stayed overnight in Boston. You may recall having approved a field trip of that sort. Attended workshops and won some awards. Harbinger, the online harbinger was awarded fourth, I think, in the country for a school this size for an online newspaper. So again, there are some articles that were awarded, including classes over there by Little Display. And the Writing Center will be going to their national convention in March. And four students will be presenting papers that they wrote and researched in the form of a workshop for other students. And they're, one of their advisors, Seth Zarnecki, is also, also has had work published. His article is over there, it was published in the National Council, the English Journal for the National Council of Teachers of English. And last week, he presented a webinar on this topic of labor-based grading. So I have to highlight some of the adults and not just the students because the professional work of some of these teachers is exciting. And they're students, and I benefit from this. And it's authentic. It's authentic work for an audience outside the classroom. Their teachers are showing their students that the passion is alive and they continue to grow even after 15 and 20 years of teaching. So I think that is sort of the update. And what I wanted to zoom in, zoom in on a little bit is some of the work we're doing in curriculum review and revision. And we do this through PLCs, professional learning communities. And I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with them. But we're fortunate. We are fortunate here that recently, through the efforts of you and the administration and the union, I think all teachers have had prep time built into their daily schedule. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that gives us time to collaborate with other teachers on special topics. And so the PLC is a professional learning community where you pick a topic and you do usually meet weekly with these people. And what we're doing in the English Department is we are updating and revising our curriculum because the world is changing, because our, you know, Vision 2026 is, you know, is new and we're working to meet that. Our students are changing and the canon is changing or not. So we need to sit together and work on making common, common assessments, common units. Sort of standardizing a little bit of our work more than it has been in the past without using our autonomy and individuality as teachers. It's a fine balance, it's a tough balance. So we, we set out to assess what's working, what's outdated, what we, where the gaps are. We use the frameworks, we use best practices, we use one another, we use professional communities that we're involved in outside of school to help make decisions around skill building and content. English is, our discipline is something I think that is beautiful and wonderful to teach. It's stories, it's language, it's, it's human behavior, it's heartache, it's triumph. But with, with that beauty and with that choice we have comes a lot of decision-making and toiling and debating and disagreeing. And these are some of the topics that we toil over in the past couple of years. You know, do we teach Shakespeare? There are teachers who think, no, there's no reason to teach Shakespeare anymore. And there are others who believe really strongly that there's a place for Shakespeare. Not only are the content of his place quite relevant, despite how old they are, but, you know, he's, for many of, for many of us, he's, he's a language, a master of language. So we have a lot of discussions around the changing canon. And this is also in relation to culturally responsive teaching, windows and mirrors creating for our new students in our classrooms, our student body is changing. And so we have to find a way to connect with them and to connect with them and to build their skills. To build their skills, you've got to connect with them and choose the texts and the stories and the articles and the media that speaks to them. So the topics we're toiling over are there. I don't know if there's any you want to hear more about, but they're pretty self-explanatory. And I'll leave it to you in case you want to ask any questions about that in a moment. And to finish up, Sean, I think I'm ready to go to the next slide. So of all of the work that we do in these professional learning communities, a couple of years ago, we started in the ninth grade. And I work closely with the middle schools, so I get a sense of what they are doing. And we kind of reviewed and revised and revamped the ninth grade, both skills and content. We aim to identify a couple core texts, common skills, common assessments during the mid-year, during the final, and then at least two units that are common for all students. So we value our autonomy and, but we also understand that students need to have an equitable experience regardless of the teacher. There are six, seven teachers who teach grade nine, six, seven teachers who teach grade 10. And we're passionate about what we do, so to come to a decision on many of these topics is hard work. We study student work and we use that as data to make, make choices, make decisions about going forward. So grade nine, genre studies, grade 10, American Lit, and grade 11 is the biggest change. We worked on 10th grade last year, ninth grade, two years before that. For two years, we worked on ninth grade, 10th grade last year, and then this year, we're taking on 11th grade, which is a big effort for us because typically 11th grade has been British literature. So we are now making one of the biggest shifts in the three grade levels by shifting to world literature. And I thought the most interesting of that work to share with you would be these essential questions which guide our, they shape our curriculum and they shape our scope and sequence. These are the primary sort of umbrella essential questions, and we have five or six that fall under these categories. And we shape our learning, our reading, our writing, our talking around these questions. So to come up with these questions has, it takes about, it took us about four or five. There's a lot of decision-making that leads up to the essential questions during our standings. And we've adopted, you know, some new texts that are contemporary. I've put some of them out over here to reflect our, our new student body, our changing student body. They're more contemporary pieces. We do have a nice balance between sort of our classic works that we love and contemporary works that will appeal to our students, we hope. We also allow, we're adopting a lot more of choice so that students can engage in independent reading and lots of group groups and lit circles. And there's one other thing that's a pretty big change for our students. And I don't think I have it on my notes. The choice, I don't remember. I'm sorry. Is there anything else over here? The typical, you've seen the Harbinger, maybe Satchel. And I think I'm happy to elaborate on anything or answer any questions you might have. Yeah.
Could you just give one or two examples of the literature that you use in grade nine, grade 10, grade 11? Even if you're over there.
Right, so I put the newer texts up here. So some of the newer texts we've adopted for grade nine is the Jennifer DeLeone text that I think many of you are familiar with, don't ask me where I'm from. And With a Fire on High is another text that's contemporary. Ninth grade students have read for summer reading, but the ninth grade teachers feel that they want to make that part of the school year. It's gone over quite well in summer reading, and so they would like to do that with the students. And then they do Lord of the Flies, they read Romeo and Juliet for some older texts. Some of them are still reading of Mice and Men. They read A Raisin in the Sun. They have a pretty hefty short story and poetry unit as well. 10th grade, the core classic texts that we are maintaining are, the one is Gatsby, The Great Gatsby. And the contemporary one is for teachers to choose between either, let's see, the one over here. It's a good thing I'm not this, I'm not Your Perfect Mexican Daughter or The Sun is Also a Star. So we like to have one required older text, a classic text, and one or two more contemporary. 10th grade is where we do heavy choice, lots of choice for 10th grade students in what they're reading. And lots of establishing a foundation for peer review when it comes to writing. So in grade nine and grade 10, the 10th graders took that foundation of a process for peer review, peer response when it comes to writing, and we built on it. So that hopefully by the time our students get to junior year, they're comfortable talking about writing. They use similar language when they talk about writing. They know how to speak about it constructively, and they're pretty much helping each other and learning from each other by sharing their writing so much, so developing that confidence. And grade 11, World Lit, we're in the midst of this. So we haven't even written a description for the course yet. So we came up with these essential questions. And I think we're probably in agreement that there's going to be some sort of maybe Gothic or fantasy Frankenstein perhaps. And then a newer text, right now, teachers are working with Exit West, which is a contemporary text. And in fact, Seth, so you know, the nice thing about English is we can try these out on students, either in small groups for their lit circles or in one year, you know, we can try a text out and, and kind of gauge how responsive and it is with the students. And if we need to, order more the next year. If it's a text that we decide we're not going to adopt as core for every single student, it's used in the independent reading and the small lit circles. Students try books out for us as well. So Exit West, in fact, in Seth Zarnecki's junior English class yesterday, or it was yesterday, I think he had an international correspondent from the New York Times talk about refugees, immigration in the United States and across the world, across the globe. And that was relevant to their reading of Exit West. So that's the new text there. Still don't know if Shakespeare's going to make the cut for junior English World Lit. I think, in fact, we do have a junior, junior English teacher offering a workshop on teaching Shakespeare in a culturally responsive classroom. So that's one effort we are making to help each other, help our colleagues teach Shakespeare and still make it relevant and accessible. And again, if you want to take a closer look, those are some of the new texts that we've adopted.
Kathy?
So in the very beginning, you talked about listening versus reading. Is that, I listen to books all the time and I love it. Like it just, it puts me in a different mindset and exploring a book versus, and I read, because when I read, I fall asleep. So what is, what is going on with that?
You know, I, just a couple of days ago, a student in class said, I can't, I don't have time to read books, so I listen. I listen to them, I love it as well. I read the book I'm teaching every time I'm teaching. And so sometimes it's nice, the 15th time over or the 10th time over to listen. Sometimes it's nice to listen to it when you're out for a walk and it is effective and it is powerful. And I share the listening with my students, especially when I find a good reader. And I talk to students, and I think we all do, it's definitely an option, it certainly is. But I like to communicate to them that especially for younger readers or kids who don't like to read or think they're not good readers or they're slow readers, it is important to see the text as you are listening. That's how you develop your reading skills and literacy. I also talk to students about, one, it's a good time to listen and one, it's actually, you know, time to read. We spend more time in the English classroom, reading and writing, than we ever have before. We ask ourselves on a weekly basis, why are we covering more, less, you know, why are we covering fewer and fewer texts than we were even five years ago? Just five years ago. And it's not hope. It's not, it's a combination of technology and, I don't know, stamina, I talked about before as well. So where we used to send kids home to do their writing at home independently a lot and their reading at home independently a lot, we are doing the bulk of that in the classroom. The higher level kids are doing a lot of the reading on their own. But the writing, I just spent six days with kids, writing consistently, drafting, peer responding, and revising. And we didn't used to do that. So that's, we used to have them write independently on their own at home and hand in the final project, product. It's technology, it's, you know, chat, artificial intelligence, making sure they're doing the, they're writing themselves, but being available to them to ask questions as they write instead of when they hand in a final product and it's maybe too late to make some changes. So working with them on the drafting stage more heavily than just waiting for a final draft. Reading with them in class and modeling close reading and reacting to what you're reading. So we are not covering as many texts as we used to, and that's why I had depth over breadth. And that's fine with us, we just wonder why is this happening? And we don't fight it because it's not necessarily a bad thing.
Can I just add, because Jane and I have had this conversation about universal design for learning, where you hear people talk about UDL and the question about audio versus text and accessibility for students. One of the things that we often talk about is, and you mentioned this to Jane, like, what are we teaching in that moment? What is the standard that we're trying to accomplish? And when are the times when you need the text in front of you? Like close reading, for example, which Jane brought up, there may be times when you're going to need to draw evidence from the text to support an argument. That's very hard to do from an audio. So that you're probably going to need to be going back and forth. If we're trying to talk about theme and talk about, you know, something that's more of a big idea, that may work well from the audio. So it's really looking at what's the standard we're trying to teach, what's the goal, the learning goal, and that pairing, and it's a conversation that's happening pre-K to 12 across disciplines, not just in English. And we're all kind of grappling with, you know, how we give that accessibility and build the skills and, and make the right, help kids learn to make choices as well.
Interesting because like if a kid doesn't like to read, they're not going to read. You know what I mean, they're just, they'll read what they want to read. And some of the, some of the stuff that, that we offer is just hard to read. Like I was talking to my husband the other day about grade expectations. You know, going back, I'd read it because I've been reading a book about this and.
Reading a book about reading? It's tough, believe me, I've done it.
No, but it was about grade expectations. But you know, would it, would we get more kids interested in reading? If they're listening to it as well. You know what I mean, because it, it kind of takes you away in a sort from like your everyday life if you're sometimes listening versus, you know.
Just get some interest in Warren.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not something that we, we communicate is a bad thing and we don't fight it too much. And same thing with AI and chat, you know, it's, it's, we're only in the beginning stages of those questions and conversations, but it's there and it's useful. And listening, just like listening to a book is entertaining more than reading it yourself, so yeah. So Catherine, I'm sorry. So Kathy, I'm sorry. Sorry, I just came from the new world. Transition. But it looks still like the research that comprehension is better in books than it is in audio or screen media even, that there's so much skimming going on. So I think it's great for those of us that are out for a walk and they're listening to something that's not learning based. But in terms of really learning and making those distinctions, it still looks like books is king and that just must, and I would love to see everything go to digital and trees not being cut down for books. But in the business of developing brains, it really looks like books are king still.
Paul?
Yeah, you mentioned technology a couple of times and on the previous slide, I think it was one of the things you were toiling over was no technology. So can you talk about that a little more?
Well, it's a distraction. So while it's really useful and helpful, kids are using their devices to take notes and to do their assignments. And so when they have their device out, because we're talking about an assignment or a text, quite often, there's something else on the screen. And so it's hard to monitor and it's a distraction. And so I, and we, and the phones as well, which phones, you know, go away, but it's almost too much of a distraction so that I shared with one class, and Kathy, I'm not sure if it was your class.
It was, yes.
Yeah. I think the next text we read, I am going to ask that they do their note taking on paper. And I want to experiment because they are good students. They take notes, right? They're reacting and interacting with the text. And they take notes. And they have to have their notes out sometimes for conversations and discussions and the work that they're doing. But when the computer is up, there's tons of other stuff going. And it's fine. It's part of being a teenager and being in a world where everything is at your fingertips and being easily distracted. So I want to try the next text where we read from the book and we take notes by hand so that when we're doing our class activities, we don't need the device to access our notes. Just to see, and learn from the kids too. Like, how was that for you? What did that do for you? How did that work for you? I don't think that I see more of them. If kids are doing an activity and they finish, a phone comes out. It's like, it just comes out, they're done. They're not distracting class. They're waiting for other kids to finish, but their computer is up and their phone is out. I don't think I see where the three kids in a class of 20 who just sort of sit and wait. And, you know, that's okay. That's not their world. If their world is to see, you know, what's on the screen next or they're very, they multitask. They're very busy kids and they're very capable kids.
What would you hope to get out of kids taking notes on paper versus a computer?
What, I would hope to eliminate the distraction during class. During class discussion and activity. Because the number of times you might hear a teacher ask, you know, devices away, phones away, let's just talk and not use our screens. So I would hope to eliminate a distraction. And it's, you know, it's something I do, I try to do a little bit each week. But the kids have information on the computer that they need access to naturally. So it's a good and it's a bad. It's a distraction, but it's also obviously really helpful too. They collaborate great with the computer. Collaborate. And they don't, I don't think they, may not write as well or respond as well by hand, right? So you get, when you ask students to hand write an essay, I don't know if you get their best work. And this is why it's, it's hard, it's something we toy a little. If they can't edit and revise their thoughts as quickly and efficiently by hand.
The other one I have was character education.
So I don't even know if that's the right term. But because we're reading stories about some tough topics and some wonderful topics, we're reading stories with content that's hard. Violence, death, love, companionship, friendship, betrayal. Because we're reading, our characters are taking us through all of these emotions and experiences so we can learn from them and their triumphs, their resilience, their tragedies. We're able to talk about some real relevant topics, but we can use imaginative literature to do that. And it removes a stressor and it removes, you can talk about something that isn't personal because, well, it is personal. But you don't have to make it personal because you're using the character to talk through some of these behaviors and experiences. So teaching the power of compassion, resilience, kindness, hard work, have come through tragedy and suffering, we teach all of that through imaginative literature. And we'll look at it.
Thank you for your time tonight and also the dedication and the time and effort to make the English and all the teachers in English department, to make this even a much richer curriculum. It's wonderful. It's not an easy task to overtake, especially the UBD. My question for you is, on the grade 11, what was the initiative to change from the British literature to world literature? Was it a directive from this Department of State? Or is that something that your department over undertook?
That was something we decided together. We decided that, and there are, we used to have a world literature course here as an elective in the 12th grade years ago. And we do have a non-Western literature course as an elective for 11th and 12th graders. But we decided, we thought it was really important for kids to have a worldview, some perspective and exposure. And the frameworks have a bit of world lit. They're very heavy on British literature as well. So we thought a nice way to transition into some of this culturally responsive teaching and getting kids ready for life outside of high school and all the people they will meet in their, you know, jobs and in their colleges and education. Windows and mirrors as well as an initiative. All of that pointed really pretty clearly towards world literature. It's tough, right? Because the kids aren't necessarily drawn to something that's foreign to them or, so. But it's pretty common, I think, in high schools to have. Brit lit is pretty common still, but I think world lit makes a lot more sense. And it's exciting to us. We may not be as expert in that area, which is why the professional learning community is really essential.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time and your attention. And I know, don't feel compelled to go over there, but I'm going to leave it up and you don't get breaks, do you?
No, not tonight. But I'm going to, I have to hold you there for one more second because I have to channel Paul Bucka, who is no longer with us.
On the board.
I thought maybe he was coming in by the aisle tonight.
Do you, well, you know, his phrase was, do you have everything you need? But I'll alter that to, what, if anything, did you, like, cut out of your, you know, if we could have all the money in the world, what would we want to provide? What did you cut out? Because obviously you don't have all the money in the world because we don't have all the money in the world.
So I think the easy answer to that is pretty logical. It's books. We're managing. And you've always been quite supportive. I don't even want to say what the book budget was when I started this job. Do you want to hear?
Yes.
I think you want to say.
So I, I don't know. I've been doing the job as department chair for 16, 17 years. It was close to $20,000 when I first started. I mean, we don't have textbooks. Like, it's not like math, we're not adopting this huge textbook program. Individual titles. And $20,000 in one year for many years when I first started. And now it's, and we're managing, we're managing now with, I think, $3,800. We have a beautiful book room. It's not enough because, I mean, so we're figuring out when to teach what. We don't all teach the same book at the same time. And we have to sort of, you know, we have to make things work. So of course it's books. More books would always be helpful. But we're managing. And I did, I know, I know Paul Bucka was the one who used to have that question. And I didn't know if anyone was going to ask or not. I like the way you put it. That was smart. To say, what do you need or what can we do for you? Because you don't, I don't know. I put it down in writing. It's over there. It's at that little table. And it's, it's honest. I'm just going to say it's honest.
I would say our staffing in the English department is perfectly adequate. And having more books is better than fewer books, of course. And in an effort to, let's say, move away from British literature, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, toward world literature, we'll take the adoption of more texts. And to do that, we'll just take an investment in texts over time. And to do that in one fell swoop is difficult. Also, a teacher's capacity to adopt multiple books and new units in one year is a real challenge. So I'd say staffing wise, we're in really great shape. Books wise, we have a really great book room with lots of resources, but you could always do with more. And so Jane and I met to talk through her budget. And the goal was really invest in the world, like, the kind of the movement toward world literature and that that will be a multi-year.
You were on your way out.
Sorry.
All right, let's just go around the tables.
I just have to, I just feel compelled to share one thing because I just am so appreciative of your thoughtfulness and everything that you put into the curriculum and the worldiness of it. Is that I've learned of, in the last, I don't know, couple of years, many kids graduate who are majoring in English. And I just had to share that because it's clear that you're creating a love. And a friend's son had ju, she just shared with me a supplemental essay that he wrote. And he's majoring in English. And in the question, and he just chose to, it was just a small one. And he said, and I don't know why, people ask me, what are you going to do with it? And he said, I don't even know. And I don't have to know right now because I want to be curious and I want to be a well-rounded citizen. Like, it was awesome. And I just wanted to share that with you.
Well, thank you for sharing that because we do often feel it's a dying art. It's, it's sounds strange to say that language and literature and English is a dying art, but it seems that it's not a path kids take in this, you know, world of STEM. And so it's really nice to hear that.
I thought you might like that.
Students who's embracing English, right? She has about four different English classes.
Yeah.
Did I miss someone?
I was just going to ask a quick question about the adoption of new books and the line item of about $3,800 to replace books. I assume that, and maybe I'm making, I'm a science teacher. So when I adopt books, I adopt giant textbooks. But
Twenty probably sounds like
So my, I guess my question kind of is, are a lot of the books that you're currently using, are those in the, kind of in the public domain? So essentially, you're paying for the publishing of the actual book? Or, and adopting these newer books, if they're not necessarily in the public domain, are going to cost significantly more money to run that adoption over time? And is, how's that, I guess my question would be, how's that being factored in from a budgeting standpoint? Like, I would assume that a Shakespeare textbook probably hasn't changed a whole, or a book, I should say, hasn't changed from like the $3 price it was when I was in high school versus going out and looking at some of these newer books that could be $10 or $15 a copy, for example.
It's, or more expensive. It used to be that if something was in Oprah Book Club, it'd be like, I rock it. So it's, the price of books do change over time. And, you know, these newer paperbacks that are up here that we're starting to purchase over the course of a couple of years cost anywhere from, I guess, $9 to $15 each.
I will add that you are correct, like, and this is not in the English department. In social studies, they read the autobiography of Frederick Douglass, which I think is in the public domain. And so those copies are much cheaper and they're around the building. Like, and you could simultaneously teach that text to a bunch of classes because the text itself is cheap. I think Gatsby, as old as it is, is not in the public domain, I think. And so
I think it just recently did.
It just maybe recently did. But then you're looking at $15 a copy times, you know, dozens or hundreds of copies. And it does get kind of pricey, but not on the scale of a textbook adoption. But then again, for textbook adoption, you might only do that once every eight years, 10 years, something like that. So, I mean, it's a balance we strike and we have these conversations about what the priorities of the department are in the next year and two years and three years. And we budget accordingly.
And there was a Russian European literature course for many years. So we've got those books sitting on the shelves that, you know, we can tap into for world literature. The collection is wonderful.
Matt?
Yeah, forgive me because this is probably now obvious. I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right. It makes sense. So you, you only teach books that you can supply the students with texts in the school?
Yeah. So there are times when kids will have to take a book out of a library. So with the choice in reading, independent reading or reading with a book group or a lit circle, when kids have a choice in what they read, we don't always have those copies or we don't always have five or 10 copies. And so they might choose to get their own copy or sign it out of a library. But the whole classroom books that we teach with our, all of our students at the same time, of the Gatsby's and, you know, the Lord of the Flies and the Raisin in the Sun, those books are purchased with the line item budget.
But they might, we might only on hand have enough for four class sets. So you might be teaching four, you know, one teacher teaches three sets of, freshman might be consuming all of the copies in the building of a certain text and another teacher might have to wait. And you just have to kind of like manage around it and plan on who has it next. And that's something an English teacher's been doing forever.
Yeah. And then your copies aren't in good shape because they're being put backpacks and, but
So just to follow on, because it sounded like earlier on when you were talking about more of the reason why you're reading less books, that you're covering less books. And it sounded, I wasn't sure if you were, it sounded like regression as opposed to progression. Like, is it because you don't have enough books?
No. No, 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 no. Uh-uh. It is because, it's not because we don't have enough books, not at all. I didn't, I hope it, I hope you didn't interpret it that way. It's because we want to do, we want to work with students more on their reading and writing. We want to see them do the writing and help them through that process as they're drafting, instead of sending them home and expecting the final product a week later. We want them to read in the classroom so that they are reading and write in the classroom so they are writing and not accessing papers and essays online. And so it's, it just, you just are a more effective teacher, we're finding these days, if you work with students in the midst of that process of reading and writing, instead of just expecting the end product. Read 15 pages for Wednesday. We'll talk about it on Wednesday. Plenty of kids read at home, depending on the class and the level. But it's a check and balance too. It's one way for teachers to make sure kids are engaging in the work and doing the work, at least during that class time. But it's not because of the lack of
Last dance? Quick, run.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Michelle, you are welcome to stay the entire meeting. You are also welcome to head home and start your evening. So it's completely up to you.
Make usage of it. Thank you.
Okay, MASC, MASs joint conference update?
Sure. So Stephanie, Kathleen Howland and I have the privilege of attending that MASs, MASC joint conference. I did provide in your packet the delegate assembly report on actions taken on the resolutions. I'll channel Kathleen. You know, these resolutions take some time actually to become legislation and have an impact. So there's a lot of time for input and feedback. I think it was another great workshop. I think it was another great workshop, you know, conference. I attended a few sessions. One session that I attended was the Worcester Public Schools. Talked about their development of a transportation department. So they talked about bringing it in-house and what it took. You know, it was a three-year process. I left thinking that I don't want to get into the transportation. But it was, it was great to hear about what it takes, the commitment it takes. And they also provided some great tools to do an analysis of, is there a cost benefit to bringing transportation internally? So something that was great to learn about, great to, great to hear. Stephanie, do you want to talk about a conference, workshop you attended?
Sure, I attended a workshop, a panel of leaders from the Needham Public Schools about the work they've been doing and their approach to equity, diversity, and inclusion. And sort of how they've been approaching their work and sharing some of their examples of communications and sort of their strategy in that respect. So it's interesting.
Communicating in polarizing times was another session that we attended. So Chris Varan, who's worked with the committee, presented some useful pragmatic suggestions and strategies around how do we communicate when, you know, there are very polarizing topics to discuss. And that was very, very helpful and very pragmatic.
I have to say that my first conference was in 2008. And he taught it then.
Yes.
And we were polarized then, too. He has job security.
Polarization has endured.
Yes.
I went to a number of sessions and with a lot of K to eight reps from Southborough and Northborough as well. One was on, boy, legal issues and special needs. And I'm so glad that we have peace in our kingdom. It's really frightening how big those get, how acrimonious and expensive they are. And so that was, it was interesting. And I went to a revamping of the Medway Social Studies System toward equity and writing the historical narrative and seeing it through many lenses. And so I was like a 1600s Muslim woman in this story that we all engaged in. And so it was really good to, to get in, for me, in my intellectual curiosity, just to kind of get into the classroom experiences or the actual curriculum. But I was deeply saddened there was not one session on the arts, any kind of arts. And I regretted that.
So next year, put in the.
They do ask, they do ask. There you go.
So if you have a chance next year to attend, it's.
I would recommend it. I really do find that there's a wide variety of things. And, you know, it's our tribe, right? I went with you before, Sean.
Yep.
The conversations are great. And within the sessions, I think really meaningful and helpful to the work.
All right.
All right. Then let's move on to the budget. Oh, yes?
Can we just get back to legislative update just for a second? I was just curious how that meeting came about with Senator, the two reps?
So Senator Kennedy reached out and asked if we'd be willing to meet and have a conversation. As a result, state reps asked if they could join. So we actually toured Peasley Elementary School. We had submitted a statement of interest for Peasley and MSBA program. So they wanted to tour the facility and advocate on the Northborough pre-K through eight district for being invited into that program. And then they also wanted to learn more about Algonquin Regional High School. So it was an invite, they reached out to us, which was very nice.
It's fantastic. I've never heard of that.
No, it was well worth the time. I think it was, you know, a great connection. We have relatively new senator and new reps. So trying to rebuild those relationships. And they're keenly interested in more, in partnering with us and advocating on our behalf.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now budget.
Sean, wrong, wrong slides.
Not, not wrong. Can't take, pick the blame for this one.
All right, so this evening, I'm pleased to present to the school committee the FY25 preliminary budget. As you all know, the budget really is a vehicle to try to accomplish larger goals. It's not really about the money, but it's what we're trying to achieve and impact in terms of student experience. Vision 2026, educate, inspire, and challenge plays a critical role in our budget process, which is our mission. It's quite simple, but not easy to achieve. Really thinking about how do we educate, inspire, and challenge all students is something we work toward every day. Our vision, so you, you learn from Jane Vitar, some of the work that happens in the English department. And really, we're trying to develop students who are collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented, and healthy and balanced. And we're really ready to be citizens when they leave Algonquin Regional High School. The budget is just that, it's a process. So although I'm presenting to you this evening the preliminary budget process, many more meetings and conversations and iterations of the budget will take place over the next several weeks and months. But the budget process does start early in the summer, in August, when we really sit down with the leadership team and talk about what are the budget goals for the upcoming fiscal year? And what are the expectations of NASA? What is the timeline and when are due dates? So that we're all on the same page as we begin the school year. And then September, October, Principal Bevan and directors work closely with educators. Principal Bevan works with his department chairs and really has questions and conversations around, what does your department need? Those requests come in to Sean and then into the finance department, Becky. And those are aggregated into a preliminary budget. And again, that requires a lot of input from educators, the leadership team, and the central office to make happen. So this evening really is a culmination of that work that took place to develop the preliminary budget. And then again, this will be the starting point to continue the work and really move to a recommended budget for the school committee. It's hard to believe it is December. I'm still wondering where time, where time has gone. But January and February, we get much more data around the budget. The governor's is, her, will release her budget at the end of January. And we'll use that information to continue to fine tune and update our budget based on the governor's budget. And then March will hold a budget, a public hearing. And then April, town, April and May, town meetings in Northborough and Southborough. So the budget is really driven by budget priorities. So the school committee plays a really important role in defining what the goals are for the upcoming fiscal year. So what is before you this evening is the FY25 approved budget priorities. And I will not read through these bullet by bullet. These are very familiar for, to the school committee. I will note that something that is new this year from past years is a little bit more specific details about each of the budget priorities. For example, under empowering learners, one specific bullet is to fund the recommended curriculum replacement cycle and explore alternative curriculum cost models. So Jane Vitar talked about the budget for ELA being $3,800. We also have a curriculum replacement or textbook replacement budget where each department cycles through a replacement. So over a five to six-year period, every department has an opportunity to have a significant investment in either literature or texts. And then again, equity of opportunity. So having Michelle here this evening, we really are hoping to expand experiential learning opportunities for juniors, juniors and seniors, but also for freshmen and sophomores where appropriate. Under educator, learning and leadership, this is my daughter. She only calls when she needs money or. Her car is not working. So educator, learning and leadership. So really thinking about creating a special education team chairperson position to really orchestrate and conduct all the work around special education. And then finance and operations, although many of the bullets have to do with capital projects, I think the school committee thought it was important to list these as priorities. One is to seek and achieve net zero. So really thinking about energy and, energy usage and water. Thinking about opportunities for solar. Last month's meeting, we heard from a select and a potential opportunity. Also, thinking about creating a special education stabilization fund. So there's variability from year to year from special education. So one way to make the budget process more predictable is having a special education stabilization fund that will give the school committee an opportunity to not only fund the excess and deficiency, but also have other means to fund other stabilization accounts for specific uses. And then utilizing field rental revenues. So again, we're coming to the conclusion of phase one of the athletic complex. Really thinking about how do we think, not just in the short term, but also five to 10 years when there will be repairs and costs associated with maintaining the facility that we have. And lastly, something that the school committee talks about each and every year, which is develop a sustainable contribution to the OPEB unfunded liability. So how do we create a mechanism to fund that account? Because it is something that the longer the district waits to fund that account, the larger the investment will be in future years. So those are the, the key budget priorities the school committee has set out. Also, I did provide the school committee with the fiscal year 2025 budget memo. So Becky and I really sit down and talk about what are we anticipating? Some of the challenges for the upcoming year? What are some of our projections? And we really provide the two towns what we think are, are the best projections for the assessments to those communities. The assessments are really hard to predict. I think over the last several years, we've been fairly accurate, which again helps each of our community towns budget for what they can anticipate for the assessments from Algonquin Regional High School. So in fiscal year 2025, the budget impacts that we're, we are experiencing really is general education transportation. We are seeing an increase in costs in general transportation in the preliminary budget. The school committee really has an opportunity to go in two different directions. We are in year four of our contract with NRT. It was a three-year contract. We had the ability to extend it one year to a fourth year, which we have. And we also have an opportunity to extend it to a fifth year to close out the contract. The fixed increase in the fifth year is 2%. If we were go, if we were to go out to bid and rebid transportation, we are anticipating a 20% increase at a minimum in terms of regular ed transportation. There are some concerns about NRT and its ability to deliver quality service, not just at Algonquin Regional High School, but also in our pre-K through eight. So the, the conversation and decision to move in a certain direction really needs to be in partnership with Northborough and Southborough school committees. So in the budget for you, the preliminary budget, there is a 20% increase in transportation that is embedded in the preliminary budget as a placeholder for future conversations around what direction the committee would like us to take. Special education out of district tuition, again, the variability from year to year. We are seeing an increase in special ed out of district tuition. We've had a few students who've moved into our district. We are obligated to provide them with the least restrictive environment and for, for some students that are, that is attending schools outside of our district. Special education transportation has been a significant increase. That is something that districts across Central Mass are experiencing. So this is a budget impact. Supplies and material costs, although inflation has moderated, certain areas of material costs we're, we are seeing still being impacted by inflation. But again, it's, it's much better than it was two years ago. Last year was also an improvement. So we are seeing improvements, but there are still impacts. Insurance costs, so we work closely with our insurance consultant to really try to project what the insurance increase will be. In the budget for you this evening, there's a 10% projection of increase on healthcare. And then SRFs out. So we have been the benefactor of SRF funds, SRF two and SRF three. Those funds need to be expended by the end of fiscal '24, so the end of this year. We've worked hard not to create structural deficits within our budget using SRF funds, but it's really hard not to do. So one of the impacts is some of the purchases that we placed on SRF three now have to be placed back into the operational budget, and that is having an impact. Those SRF three, FY24 expenses include purchases of student staff devices. We did have a tutor to do some recovery from the impact of COVID for some of our students and then translations. So again, the total of SRF funds that offset FY24 budget that now need to be moved on to that FY25 budget is a little over $140,000. Inflation, so just a quick look at inflation. So thankfully, we are no longer in the seven and six and a half percent inflation. So we are 3.2, which again helps, helps with the power of the dollar and the purchasing that we need to do in the upcoming fiscal year. Just a quick note on the two types of budgets. There's many types of budgets, but these are the types of budgets that we typically talk about. A level funded budget, which is basically the prior fiscal year appropriated budget is the budget amount for the upcoming fiscal year. With a level funded budget, you have to make reductions to live within that, that amount. In my tenure, I don't, I don't know if Joan or tenured members of the committee recall ever having a level funded budget at the regional level. It's not been a reality, and I hope it never is. It's not a good place to be. A level services budget is using, is really looking at what are the costs to maintain services that are currently available to students in the prior fiscal year? And really, what will it take to continue a level service to our students? I would say where the regional school committee has fallen is, is a level services budget with incremental growth in certain areas year over year. Just a quick review of the fiscal year 2024 budget process. So you'll see initial budget requests, the row with preliminary budget, the revised preliminary budget, and the school committee voted budget. So at this time last year, with a preliminary budget, you can see that the preliminary budget was at a 5.57% increase. And this just is, is a benchmark for the committee to see how it compares to where we are this year in the preliminary numbers. So with all of the directors and the leadership team at the high school and the finance team really looking at the, some of the costs of electricity, healthcare, the budget, initial budget requests came in at a little over $30 million, which was a 12.88% increase over fiscal year '24. We applied circuit breaker reimbursement. That is a fixed number that we know, which was $682,180. And that brought, brings us to a preliminary budget of $29,332. Twenty-nine thousand, three hundred.
Twenty-nine million.
Thousand, twenty-nine million. Three hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Wish it was twenty-nine.
Three hundred and forty-three dollars, or a 10.31% increase. So we are in a different position than we were last year at this time. However, if you did a four or five-year look back from FY24, you'll see this is not a skew of where we've been at this time in the past. Just as a, a kind of a benchmark, we always think about what is a 1% increase? So 1% increase is $265,903. That just gives us a baseline of what, what it will take to either increase our budget or reduce our budget. So in the fiscal year 2025 budget process, there are many proposed positions by the leadership team, central office, and the school committee. So this is just a summary of the positions that were requested, requested. These positions are not included in the preliminary budget number that I just presented. So it's a .2 FTE, adaptive physical education teacher. It's a shared position across the three districts. So the regional portion would be .6. Assistant Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity. So this is a position that again, that is shared with Northborough and Southborough. Um, that's $34,000, and that is to support the work of um, the director of multilingual learners and really having a more of a focus on equity. And an ESP, uh, human resource generalist, a library ESP, um, a point two of a speech and language pathologist and a team chairperson. Um, and five forest city assistant coaches um, for $20,000. So the total FTEs is 3.36, um, which is a little under 1% um, in terms of the total impact of the budget. Again, these positions are not in the preliminary budget that I'm presenting this evening. Budget offsets. So um, again, I shared with you the first budget offset that we always apply is circuit breaker tuition reimbursement. We also applied the FY 24 circuit breaker transportation reimbursement. Um, so again, the total offsets was a little over $680,000. So the fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget um, is at $29,332,343, which is a preliminary budget increase of $2,741,997, which is a 10.31% increase over fiscal year 24. So some of the items that are that are included in the FY uh, 25 preliminary budget are textbooks. So the science department is looking at um, replacing some textbooks. It is their year to have um, a more significant investment in in their texts. Um, student and staff devices. So as the committee recalls, we are moving to um, Chromebooks issued uh, and purchased by the district for a one-to-one. We are moving away from uh, bring your own device. And then learning allies ally software. So we talked about audible books. Learning ally software takes um, texts that are aren't typically available on Audible um, and provides a place uh, where students can actually listen to their textbooks um, using this particular tool. So it's been very, is a very beneficial tool. So the total of instructional materials that are in the budget that are kind of above and beyond um, what we typically expend is a $137,918. Historically, if we look at the past um, five years, um, I think the regional school committee has been very modest in its request for budget increases. If you compare the average of inflation to the average of budget requests over the five years, um, the budget plus the appropriate budgets have been under inflation. So um, and you know, again, we've been able to maintain a high level uh, quality of experience for our students. Um, but again, we're at the point now where um, I think greater investment in regional budget is appropriate. So um, in terms of next steps of the budget process, so um, the next step really is we have these preliminary budget numbers. Um, we're working with a leadership team on really thinking about what are the priorities? What are the goals? What are we hoping to achieve? Um, we are waiting for the state budget numbers. Chapter 70, regional transportation reimbursement, circuit breaker. Becky and the finance team are really looking closely at health insurance, heating and cooling. We're looking very closely at transportation costs. Um, really fine tuning the the budget number. We'll take all those reductions, which really don't impact the student experience necessarily, and see where we're at. Um, and then at that point, we'll work closely in collaboration with the leadership team and the department chairs on thinking about, you know, what does a 4% budget look like? What is the impact of a 4% budget? What does a 5% budget look like? What's the impact of a 5% budget? What is a 6%? And we'll have a various uh, menu of scenarios for the school committee to consider in January uh, to give you some direction around, okay, what does, what does, you know, 10% budget achieve? What does a 5% uh, budget achieve? And what is the impact of maybe making some reductions? So very preliminary, a lot of work left, um, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
I assume usually you talk about it this time too, although I I know the town is getting a new administrator, so I'm not sure how closely you've been able to, you know, telegraph and communicate with the town and then telegraph to us in conjunction with the Northborough budget about where things sit.
So we've had some preliminary conversations, more with South, the North, the Northborough town administrator, I think is is a week and a half on on the job.
Oh, they're actually open job, okay.
Yes. So we um, we have provided them with as much information about the pre K through eight budgets as well as um, after this evening, we'll provide the region of the preliminary budget to um, the town administrators. We also have provided the memo, um, kind of our forecasting memo to um, both town administrators. In our assess, in our projections of assessments, this year is a bit unique that without applying excess and deficiency to the to the budget, we're anticipating about an 8% increase in assessments to each of the communities. If E and D is applied, um, we we use $675,000 on the budget assessments. Each of the communities is a little under 5%. It's about a 4% increase increase in assessment. Very rarely do we have parity in assessments. Usually we'll have, you know, one is low and the other is high, which which complicates things. So our projections um, you know, communicate that the the most likely will be if E and D is applied, about a a 4 to 5% increase on the assessments, which is manageable.
Uh, detailed question. Sure. The the Chromebook part, is that purchase or leasing?
Purchasing.
Purchasing. Is is um, is there an option to leasing? Is that, uh, you probably explored those things.
We are exploring, you know, leasing equipment. Um, so that's something that um, Ryan O'Leary um, is looking into. I think for this particular budget cycle, it's purchasing.
Okay.
Um, and we also um, we have a pretty detailed uh, replacement cycle, a four-year plan. And um, you know, that spans actually not just at the high school, but it also spans the middle school to the high school. So um, that's something we're looking at. But leasing is something that we're interested in potentially exploring a little bit further.
Um, I think it was last meeting, we spoke about the capital, capital needs and the multi-year plan it will take us to make sure the facilities are updated. That is separate from what's included in this budget or is it?
It is separate. So that is, that that is a um, separate budget um, from from what's recommended this evening. That's a capital, uh, that'd be another, a different assessment to each of the communities. And later on the agenda, we do have kind of draft form article and the four capital projects or five capital projects that we're recommending to move forward um, for each of the communities.
Just wondering what the approach is on the number of positions that you, I guess, are not included in this budget. And I noticed a number of them were on last year's list as well, although we did fill a number of last year's list. So I just, I mean, how do you go about figuring out which ones of those you might?
Yeah, I mean, I think thankfully it's three point, you know, it's it's not a lot.
Yeah, most of them are not a lot.
And I think that um, you know, I think part of the the next process is really seeing where the next level of work brings us in terms of descent increase and then having conversations around what are the priorities of those positions. Some of those positions aren't a a large dollar amount. Um, for example, the five assistant varsity coaches is $20,000. The portion of adaptive PE teacher is $6,000. Um, so depending on where we are with the budget increase, um, I think we'll start with team chairperson position. That's a priority. Um, my my prediction though is that we'll probably be able to tackle some of those smaller position, the smaller cost positions. Assistant um, you know, this coaches, uh, adaptive PE and um, what was the other one?
Assistant director.
Assistant, maybe assistant director, but that's a shared discussion.
The library ESP is this one.
Yeah.
That'd be good. I mean, you gotta believe anything that's been on there for a couple of years is going to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think that what what um, we're looking at is similar to capital having, you know, a three to four-year plan. Like, how do we keep asking for it? You know, what what is it going to take to accomplish it and having a multi-year plan to accomplish that?
Yeah.
Um, and then at some time, at some point, it will be a commitment to for the committee to raise the budget increase to accommodate some of those positions. Also, Sean is doing a lot of work around what are the current resources that we have? The labor resources, the physical resources, and are there opportunities to deploy those in a different way? To accomplish some of those other positions that we hope to bring on.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to grants and donations. Um, so if maybe you could just give a like two sentence overview of the grant donation, and then when they're done, we'll take uh, one one motion for all of them.
All right, so we did, uh, I'll I'll start with the first one. We did read, uh, receive from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, we were rewarded Fund Code 274, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part B, uh, federal targeted special education in an amount of $44,725. So um, that is to help support our special education work.
And the regional portion of that is $12,872.
So that was the whole discussion.
Yep.
And then Sean, do you want to talk about the?
Sure, uh, the Harbinger School Newspaper uh, did a donation slash subscription drive and received, sold several donations and also sold ad space. And so the subtitles are listed there, and that that funding is used to help offset the printing of that newspaper and also to to other things with the newspaper like field trips. And then additionally, um, we approached, our city council approached several different area businesses and banks and um, received some very kind donations to help support our winter ball, which uh, happened uh, just last, this past Friday and was a huge success. And couldn't have been uh, done or um, could have been done without those funds, but it those funds helped to keep the costs down and reduce the ticket price for our students.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to accept the grants for from IDEA for $12,872? Multiple donations to basically through the Harbinger for $3,058 and $991.50 totaling $4,049.50. More multiple donations for Harbinger totaling $599 and more multiple donations from area banks to support the winter ball totaling $3,000. Do I hear that motion?
I'm okay.
So move by Paul, seconded by?
Second.
Joan, uh, any discussion? All those in paper? That is unanimous. Okay, superintendent's report to the committee.
We have principal's report.
Great. Um, our first element of the principal's report is why it's seen in our slides are our wonderful student representative, Cass Mello, who's going to tell us about her student news. So Cass, I can drive if you'd like. I can kind of advance slides if you'd like.
Sure. Um, hi guys, nice to see you all this evening. Um, so first of all, we've had a lot of events this past month, including the pep rally, dodgeball tournament, the Addams Family musical, which was only a few days after the last meeting, and then winter ball, which we just heard about. And the winter sports season began and is off to a great start. And there's also a Make-A-Wish baffle for this money and announced winners during the pep rally. Some other events were the writing center met to make cards for hospitalized kids for the holidays. There have been a number of winter concerts, including from the schools, um, sorry, unity groups and as well as community chorus concerts and the actual student performers in the building as well. We've had multiple spirit weeks. We had the Harbingers fall issue come out. The Smile Project Club is currently running a toy drive. Um, and winter break is coming up. So there's a lot of buzz in the air about that for students. Uh, some major concerns, I believe at the last combined school committee meeting, it was brought up about um, the homework policy. So we'll move back to that later, but um, some ideas that we've been thinking of as a group were wondering how it would work with school breaks or if there could be more leniency for makeup work. I know that some kids who've been out with COVID these past few years have been out for a week or more at a time, and then they have a few days and they get back to typically adjust and submit all of their work. And so um, some things you may be there, you're working with teachers, of course, maybe um, important to address. For the spring professional development goals, we're as a group researching AI at all these days. I'm one of the students that's going to be presenting on AI at the National Writing Center Conference this spring. And so um, it's a major concern now for a lot of students, particularly with the humanities classes, as Mr. Ben was describing in his presentation. Um, and so we'd love to get involved in any way with that. For um, the Gonkplex spring schedule, we love hearing updates on if there's any interest on delays and when full opening estimation dates are expected. Um, this is important for us to be able to plan events, including we're helping to plan a powder puff on the newly opened uh, football stadium and some other events on the multiplex field. So um, some major questions that we've been thinking of lately are the status of policies we posed last year. We understand that the policies can take a long time to move through government as it is so, but we'd love to help out if there's anything we can do, um, and support that can be aided there. Um, we'd love to hear more about the changes to the wellness day scheduling plans and whether or not it will be more about spreading them out throughout the year or adding additional ones in the spring, depending on how the routing of that will work. I know that a lot of students found great support with them and others found more concerns with uh, having a lot of tests on days surrounding them. Um, but that is another thing that we'd love to also be involved with. And then we would love to start as a group trying to create some kind of um, centralized events page. We know that there's a lot of events that go on in our school community, and it can be difficult to keep track of them without a um, formalized process for this. And so we're looking into possibly um, with the help of Mr. Ben, creating an athletics or clubs, social media manager positions for students to give them another opportunity for leadership, which they can hopefully take, especially for the social media marketing students that are hoping to pursue that in careers in the future. So giving them some experience while in high school, as well as supporting our needs that our district may have. Um, and that's all I have. So thank you so much. Any questions?
Sure, I can respond to a few of these things, and these are things Cass and I had talked a little bit about. But uh, so just to, you know, respond to some of the things we've talked about, Cass, um, be able to start from the bottom and work my way up. Um, we are working with, and Mike Masarino, our athletic director, is uh, working to develop uh, social media manager positions that will be credited, uh, done as kind of accredited course. And those are students he's interviewed out of the sports and entertainment marketing class. And there there's a real eagerness for those students to get the real-world experience of running a social media, uh, kind of a large social media enterprise, which is really what our school's athletic department would provide. And it's a very marketable skill after here. Every major college has a social media, real social media presence, and that would be something that he's working to do and also will, as I've explained to Mr. Masarino, and I'm sure he understands and is excited about, it will take things off his plate while also enhancing our social media reporting. So the ability to, for example, report scores of every game is something way beyond his ability and his capacity. And yet, with teenagers who are going to be doing this work, he's going to be able to do that. So he's he's going to start to do that, and we're looking at potentially using that as a model to expand it outward um, to let's say the final performing arts or some of the academic areas or some of the other areas of our school that are aware of things that are happening or they might be aware only through our main um, social media presence. Uh, but to make it more uh, better reported, more robust, more complete, and all those things. So uh, that's one thing that we're, we've started, and probably in the next month or two, I think we'll have a lot of progress on. Well, the state scheduling, that is a real, going to be a real focus area in the spring as we develop our academic calendar based on the the school calendar. We're going to really have to look at where, uh, how we place certain different, different things uh, from the high school uh, against uh, the school calendar. Specifically, how do we plan, let's say, the end of a quarter with uh, the mindset that a wellness day might be in there and the end of a quarter and the final end of quarter assessments do start to pile up around that time. And if there's a wellness day there, which is what happened this year, it does, it creates a bit of a challenge for teachers to manage. And when teachers have a hard time managing it, it becomes a real stressor for students. So that's something we're trying to avoid, and it's a very high priority for us going into next year to get that right and make it, uh, make wellness days, uh, operationalized wellness days that they have the desired effect, to give students stress relief and uh, just simply move that stress around into a shorter number of days, which is the feedback we received. Um, and then I maybe I'll pitch it to you, Greg, about the status of the policies.
Sure, so the joint policy subcommittee did meet several times this year. Um, also, what was discussed at the joint policy subcommittee meeting was the provost policy that was brought forward last year um, as a recommendation. So that work will continue at the next joint policy subcommittee meeting, which is February, January. And then we will have another meeting in um, March or April.
And then the other topic that Cass, you talked about was homework makeups. Uh, we do have a head of policy. We do have a handbook policy that it's lengthier than what I will, I'll just give you the, the top line summary. It indicates that students have the same amount of time to make up work or twice. The amount of time they have to, for a student to make up work is twice the duration of the absence that they've had. So that is what our handbook says. That's what teachers should be following for students who miss a week of COVID. That really would suggest that they would, teachers have two weeks. I don't know that it would ordinarily take two weeks for a student to get that work recompleted, but usually we, for students who's out with COVID for a full week, we would work with them through guidance and through their assistant principal to help reduce that workload, manage that workload. And so I'm not aware that that's not happening, but we can talk about, you know, places where it can be approved. Or I, I don't know that any new policy would need to be implemented. It's maybe better communication of our current policy might be, there might be there. You kind of covered AI on your own and Bonkplex, I don't know, Superintendent Morrow, if you want to respond to that. Uh, we're, the Bonkplex continues, progresses kind of slow, slow and steady, or we're kind of like intermittent in fact at this point. In the past week, the construction began on the amphitheater. So if you follow along on our social media page dedicated to the Bonkplex, the, the structure for the amphitheater began to be erected this week. And the stands were in a bit of a holding pattern until the press box can be completed and installed. And I think those are the remaining big pieces.
So I think it's safe to say, Cass, that there will not be any winter storm delays this year.
Never say never.
We are, no, we are excited. We are, I would say ninety-eight percent of the way complete. And we have some target dates to finish in the next several weeks. And we're confident that it, there will be no delays for a grand opening in the spring.
Currently, our winter track, because the weather has been so warm, has been using our outdoor track, of course, and getting a great deal of use to drive it. And you may remember that this repair our former track was in. They feel, they're very happy and excited about what our current track looks like and feels like under, under the heat. So we're very excited about that. Any questions for Cass?
Not really a question. It's a comment about the, because it was me who brought up the homework policy. And I, I remember we talked about it last year with Mr. McGowan and yourself. And I agree with you that I think it's definitely more of a communication, like to the staff, this is our policy and we should be adhering to it. Because I remember always being appreciative and thank you about the break, the break free, you know, breaks. I mean, the homework free breaks that were always very refreshing. And so I think it just needs a little bit more of reminding to the staff about, you know. And when we talk about our wellness days, when we think about assessments, I like to know what kind of assessments that we're giving. It doesn't always have to be an in-class, you know, quiz, test, you know, regurgitate things back. You know, is it a project-based learning thing or a video or a choice type assignment? That, you know, it doesn't always have to be something in class. I just wondering about, that's just something I'm throwing out there. And then the social media thing, I think is great, but I think it's also something that Michelle Kaling can get involved in and get the kids, I mean, involved is like your tech club, right? Like that's a great perfect example of something that the kids can do as an internship or a, I think that that's what you're going along the lines of anyways. But that would be perfect for her to tie it into some kind of work-based learning experience, so.
Yeah, that's what we're aiming for.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will just give you a few quick updates and then we have, joining me today, tonight are assistant principals Kathy Formiani and McGowan. I will just give you a few quick school updates. One is that since we last saw you, and I haven't really reported too much out on this, but we've shifted a lot of, shifted away from how we used to communicate to our rising ninth grade families. I had done some feedback gathering for our ninth grade families, rising ninth grade families, families who are currently in eighth grade to find out what information they'd like from us and in what format and at what time of the year. And the answer was pretty much, they'll be any information at any time, in any format. They just, the high school is a bit of a mystery to the rising eighth grade families. It's two different towns. It's a much bigger building, much bigger student body. And so we kind of leaned into the, that kind of chasm of, of, of misunderstanding and have offered multiple different ways that families can gather this information and we've gotten good feedback on that. So we've replaced what used to be a one-night, hour-long, in-person presentation in October here in our auditorium and then replaced it with a welcome message, which was really deeply embedded with a great deal of text and links and resources that families could consume at their own leisure. We had an eighth grade parent night that was actually an evening, or a live virtual event that actually is, it's an eighth grade parent night. Remember, we did that in the evening or in the day. I think we did that, now that I'm saying it out loud, we did it during the middle of this little day in the hopes that parents could kind of do it during their, like, workday lunch. It was live, virtual. It was also recorded and the recording was translated in the home language, including the transcript was translated and instructions on how to watch it on YouTube in its translated form. So we're trying to reach out to our families for whom English is not their home language. And then we had a in-person coffee with the AHS leadership team with words of the building for anybody who went to, to take that. So, so we, we've replaced kind of this old model with a new model that just has more dimensions, more features, more access points. And that was just, I think, we're employing a few other things.
What was the response on that?
So we got, we probably got about the same attendance at this eighth grade parent night, but even though it was kind of a lunchtime seminar, we got about probably the same numbers we would have gotten at that night. But we then subsequently sent it out in a virtual, you know, in a recorded format. So I don't know how many people have like downloaded and watched it, so that's a bit hard to measure. And then that coffee with the leadership team, we had about fifteen families show up for that and about ten stuck around to take a tour of the building. I think the goal of, from those families, what we were hearing from them was they just wanted to feel like what the school is like when there are kids in it, which is really hard to replicate when you're at an eight PM, you know, auditorium-based presentation. So we're going to try to keep our, and then since then, we had our students, our students from Trotter and Maligan, over the course of three days, came up and toured the building last week. So at this point, we, I think we've done much more than we've ever done before. And I think those families, my hope is they're feeling that are informed about what the high school's like. Our next stage will be to, in February, share with them the course selection process, which can be a little bit overwhelming, but now that they have all this new, all this information, they don't have to, they'll only have to focus on the course selection and the kind of mechanical implementation of that stuff in February. So we're excited about where we are, getting at least kind of up to speed on the high school.
I have one question on the welcome message. What kind of resources went with that?
So I shared the portrait of graduate. I shared the school improvement plan and I shared our program of studies. Just as like hyperlinks, but in addition, I shared kind of like a review of like statistics about our school, how big we are, kind of our administrative breakdown, like some of that kind of big high level information about, you know, like, almost like a summary of the high school for anybody who is just curious to know about it. And then more detailed information that they could go and drill down and find if they wanted.
Good. I just remember when I, my first kid came here, I was really impressed with the program studies. Especially, I mean, I remember the business one, they had a table outside and it was like, you know, single space, two side of this thing, all the courses they had. It was just really impressive, so.
Yeah, I think that speaks to our elective program is incredibly robust and deep and there's just so many offerings. It's, it's like a community college almost in a way. And so that, that has not changed. It's, it still is very exciting. And so that was linked in that, that as well.
I don't know if it'd be too overwhelming, but I know in the past for Algonquin students during the course selection period, there's often videos that teachers or former students of classes have made, particularly their lecturers. And I think it's been really impactful for me and some other students. And so I don't know if there's anything that could be done to encourage that with the middle schools as well? Or I think like I've seen, the course descriptions have a large variation from teachers that really go into depth about like which types of literature or subjects are really included in the class compared to others that are more general. I wonder like if there's anything that could be done to make those more robust.
I think those are good points. The reality, the unfortunate reality for freshmen is they don't have a huge number of spaces in their schedule for electives to really enjoy the, the real variety we have. Their schedule is pretty, it's filled up with a lot of requirements. And then that those requirements, as they are met, as students get deeper into their high school career, their electives opportunities expand. And that's where you really see them starting to access those things. But nonetheless, I think it's important that the few electives offerings they can access, they're making a really informed choice about how to do that. So I can look at these to do that. So just an update on some of our key initiatives that we are undertaking this year. I will just move through this very quickly, but we're at about halfway through the year. This is when I start to inventory, how are we doing against the goals we've set early in the year? Student attendance is something I've talked about at length. I won't spend too much time on that. We have already rolled out some new communications tools and some strategies. And we are looking at the next four to six weeks, developing, developing some new interventions for our tier two students. Those are students who have like attendance that could be improved, but isn't truly like, you know, dramatically poor. So that's our next area of focus. Student engagement is an area our staff identified as something that they want to work on together. It's something that I think any school, anytime in the history of schools probably would be looking to improve on. But coming out of the pandemic, a lot of schools have identified that students are harder to engage now and that the style of student is just different and requires different kinds of instruction than maybe before. Career exploration, we talked about, you've met Michelle Kaling, so she just came on board a month ago. Sons of Suicide is a program that was initiated and we started and brought to full completion for half of our students in the last month. The other half of ninth graders and eleventh graders who have, who are not taking health or PE in the first semester will take that. And the second semester will look at that training. And then we have a youth wellness coach who's joining us in January as part of that grant that you might recall Dr. Elizabeth Conner explained. That person will be here for five years on a, two days a week and they start in January. And then we also mentioned the Bonkplex, so those are really big categories that we were tackling this year with great enthusiasm. And then there are a lot of smaller ones, but these were the big buckets. So I thought I'd just share, do kind of a dipsticking for you on what, on the progress of each. Okay, so I'm going to pass along to, Kathy Formiani is going to join us here. So Kathy, why don't you come on up? Kathy is our assistant principal and she also, in addition, where part of her job is as assistant principal, she does all of our master scheduling, which is as glamorous as it sounds. It requires a lot of mastery of a power school and she ends up having, resulting in this preternatural understanding of our class sizes and all the other things. She's going to share some of that information.
Sure, so what we did, I broke down by department. The top is the number of classes that have students of one to three size. Then four to ten students, eleven to fifteen students, sixteen to twenty, twenty-one to twenty-four, and then twenty-five or more. You can kind of see the span. We've gone through and really reduced, we just have a lot more in the twenty-one to twenty-four span and we've been able to kind of reduce it back into sixteen to twenty. Most of the ratios, the actual like student teacher ratios are about sixteen, sixteen to two. They range from right around sixteen. So if you look here, you can kind of see the span a little bit better. When you look at most of the classes, we have about eighty-two percent of our classes are between four to fifteen students. So the larger number of classes are those that have like a three bands, which we're really excited about because those have really started to come back since COVID and that's very positive for us. So we're really working on trying to get those numbers a little bit more into the eleven to fifteen categories of the four to ten. But we do have some small classes such as learning to play piano, learning to play guitar. So those are, those are very much kids that really tend to like them. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on this side?
Have any idea of the benefits for these smaller classes and with different subjects?
Yeah, sure. So when we, of course, you know, we have small classes, we have more attention that's into. So we really try to make sure that, that for our CD classes, our polythor classes, we try to make those the smallest as we can. And we, we tend to let our honors classes flow a little bit higher. But even still, you know, we've really gone through and tried to lower class size as much as possible, especially after COVID. Definitely in the areas of math and science and English. And our social studies numbers have come down. They used to really be in the twenty-one to twenty-four category. We've kind of started to bring those down as well. And you'll see our health and fitness numbers are really, they're, they're both about twenty-one to twenty-four. But I think if you ask any health and fitness teacher, the more students have a class that you have, the better the opportunities are as far as when you're playing sports and, and activities that they do.
I will just share that on the right-hand side. These things were bargains on the right-hand side. It feels to me very healthy. I feel in my building that this is a very, within class sizes that are, are, are responsible to the taxpayer, but also provide a good service to students. It's a nice balance and, and something I think we can be really proud of and thankful to this committee and our communities for. We do once in a while tip into the twenty-five plus range and I, maybe you can speak to, you have a little bit of data on that. In each of those cases, it's, it's kind of an unusual circumstance and even twenty-five students in a classroom is not really unusual in American public education. But in our school, we like to try and keep that below that. And where it happens, usually there's a good, good reason for that and maybe you can speak to that.
Sure, so I'm kind of backtracked it for you for a couple of years. So if you, look, it's consistently health and fitness will have classes that are maybe at twenty-five. And that's really more based on like a scheduling constraint that you just need to have that extra person in there just so that it fits the rest of their schedule. This year, our freshman English, we had one freshman English section at twenty-five and that was, that was really due to a student that needed to change a class and we wanted to make sure that if they didn't have such an overall, an overwhelming impact to their regular schedule. And the teacher was consulted before we did that as well. So like I said, our fine performing arts were really, that's exciting for us, that those numbers are going up. In math, we have two classes, the AP Statistics at twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And you know, we could have had a third section and made those lower, but talking with the teacher, they really do a lot of project-based kind of work and discussions in groups. And she felt that that was a good size for her. And by having that the way it was, we were able to lower class size in another class. So that's positive for us. In science, that AP Physics C, that was purely, we had a transfer that came in and in their previous school, they were in that same class. And we wanted to make sure we were able to give them that same experience. So the teacher was very, the teacher and the department had worked together to make sure that that happened for that student. So that was exciting.
Let's see here, that math, calculus H and algebra two H, they say it's twenty-five and twenty-six, but they're in the twenty-one to twenty-two bracket?
No, so that, if you look, the first, those are years to twenty-one to twenty-two is school year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. So this is like a three-year look back. So the category that we're on now is school year twenty-three, twenty-four. Yeah, so we've really, if you can, you can see that we've really tried to make sure we don't have many classes over twenty-four.
Thanks.
Sean?
Going, going back to some of those charts, the, the, that one gives me, sorry. Yeah, that one. You know, just thinking about staffing and the budget impacts and I realize it's, it's not all one-for-one things. But like a little bit of concern with world languages, having five, is that right? Five sections or ten students or less? Is that, is that what that indicates?
That's probably more in our, if I go back and look, I think that might be some of our French classes.
Kathy, are any of those the ones that are sometimes combined in, like in the day-to-day, although they're listed as?
I tried as much as I could to make sure I combined them so they were truly one section. I think, you know, this year we had French one and French two. The French one wasn't going to be able to run and the teacher allowed it to go into French two so that they could run that class for those kids. So they're trying to do different things. I think the numbers are probably closer to ten than they are before by any means.
I think one of them is, I'm sorry, Sean.
Yeah.
I think one of those is our Portuguese second, which we invested in and we're really excited about. I'm sorry.
The new native, yeah, okay.
And then we are seeing flagging numbers in French and that's, we're not feeling the school where that's happening. You know, as our student body size has shrunk, so that's being seen. Our fine and performing arts, French is another area and again, in other schools similarly, that's, that's a dynamic that's at play.
One of the things to note too this year that we did with health and fitness is that we were able to have a wellness class for our students that may, our RISE students that are in the RISE program. is that we were able to have a wellness class for our students that may, our RISE students that are in the RISE program, as well as the students that may be a transfer and that need that kind of smaller section to be able to ease their transition to Algonquin. So that class ran first semester, this first semester and has done some really great things around the school.
And just, just a general comment too, over the past 10 years, we've seen enrollment declines that were projected by NASDAQ. We are at the floor right now and over the next 10 years, we will again increase enrollment about 300 students. I think one of the commitments the school committee has made over the years is not to, not to resize based on declining enrollments. We invest a lot in our people, our teachers and having smaller class sizes means better connection, more connections with teachers and that's going to serve us well. So now it's really thinking about as we build back enrollment, you know, what will it take in terms of adding potential staff? We don't want to get into a place where we've reduced the staff member, now we have to hire the staff member back.
I guess, I asked about that because there are other areas like English that have 11 sections, you know. I know there's various reasons. I just wonder, I just have some concerns about the world language section in general and making sure that's as robust as it is in bringing, as they said, like performing arts, bringing more kids in. And I, you know, I'm just interested in why that is in general, yeah.
And some of those sections in that four to 10 is part of our RISE program. So those numbers are specifically lower. So that's at least two sections in each of the main core classes.
Thank you for getting the detailed on this, especially the second slide after this one that talks about, that was my first question was going to be, what is the 25 plus? So that was really helpful. What I really was concerned on, on that one there, there's only one, if you look in the year 23, 24, you go to the science, is that one class of physics? Because, but in your thing, you said two classes.
Right, because the AP Physics Lab is a separate class. It joins into that class, so it's counted as two sessions.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
But we do account for that in staffing, so I count it as two.
It's the same room with the same 25 students.
It's the same students, but it's a separate, okay. 25 students in the lab?
It could be, it's a pretty big one.
Okay. I hope so.
That's the ceiling that that should be.
And, and I'm so glad to see through the history is that 25 plus is, has really decreased the number of classes. So thank you to Sean and the administration for getting that down and the teachers trying to work. So thank you very much.
I'd say too, like the nice thing is when I go through with new schedule, we're able to fit, like when I run the schedule, I'm able to honor 90, like we can fill at 96% getting students their choice of classes. So that's really important for kids, that they're really able to get a personalized schedule.
That's really good. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, particularly for new colleagues, that when you look at the string orchestra, the numbers are small because only Southborough has a strings program. So Northborough's was eliminated and that is a really small ensemble. And we can wish that that would be better, but that would mean, you know, somebody was studying privately in Northborough. So a lot of, that's been a longstanding issue, just to make you aware of.
Kathy, thank you very much. Any final questions for Kathy?
Are there any, I'm just curious, are there any current plans with addressing the world language concern, particularly the French department? Like are there any, or like explaining the Portuguese?
I can share a few things, just, I was thinking about it as you were talking, Sean. I think there's actually a lot of really exciting things happening in the world language department right now that are in collaboration with the middle school. And right now on the Southborough side, we have an elementary language program. But Emily Squires is the department chair, the work that they're doing around the seal of bioliteracy, the heritage language programs is really adding new dimensions to the department. They're also really looking at alignment to the standards around proficiency level and our courses being aligned to proficiency level and then doing that work with the middle schools. So our professional development is now, we're having more alignment from elementary through to the high school, looking at assessments together, calibrating kind of how we're teaching and how the learning is happening. And I think all of that is going to make a big difference. We're also educating families. So in terms of the seal of bioliteracy, Emily Squires is going to the LPAC meeting, which is our multilingual learner families. To educate them, they, their last meeting at the LPAC was focused on how do we help our children learn English? Their next meeting is how do we help our children keep their other languages? And so one of the things we want to do is educate them about our heritage language courses and about the seal of bioliteracy, which our students take in many, many languages. So there's a lot of exciting work happening that we'll continue to share with you all.
Thank you.
So next we have assistant principal Andy Gowan, who's going to give us an overview of our students' standardized achievement.
Yeah. So we, every year we go through the past five years when we look at our standardized test achievements, we look at the AP testing, the ACT, the SAT, the MCAS testing. So starting with the AP testing, for the score, in regards to the scores, you can see that there was a dip in our percentage of students from last year to this year. And over the past five years, they dipped as well. But we're still at, and that's that column on the right there. We're still at 85.85% of students earning a score of over three plus. So in comparison to kind of where AP says we need to be at, we're still doing very well there. You know, we have our department chairs look at this data and review it with the teachers who are doing the class and that could go for pretty much all of the testing that I'm going to talk about here. You'll also see the participant numbers are down a bit as the years go on and that's directly correlated to our enrollments as that has dipped as well. So there's a direct connection there. In regards to ACT testing, the five-year comparisons relatively close in all areas to the previous years. The mean score is this year increased in everything except for reading. So we're up a bit more in the ACT testing. And SAT testing, our number of students participating in SATs is dipping a bit. The column on the, the graph on the left there is a comparison of similar schools according to DESI. So DESI has a formula that they call DART that compares us to similar schools with similar populations. And you can see that the yellow bar in that column is relative to this year's testing SATs. So that's a bit lower, pretty much right across the board. And that's for a couple of reasons. One, our enrollment's dropping with that too, just like our school enrollment, but also a lot of schools are no longer requiring SATs as entrances. So for the most part, I threw a couple of central mass schools in there and you can see that we're pretty much in line where everyone else is too. So that, that's those three items there. MCAS data, so a little bit of background on this. This, you'll see the last five years, this is kind of a mix of various testing types. So in 2019, we had a computer-based test. 2020, it was waived by the state. 21, it was a paper-based test. 22 and 23 went back to a computer-based test. So this is just a little background on the data that you see there. The class of 2023 was the last class that DESI had waived before for the science, technology and engineering test. And last year, as many of you know, the state changed the scoring criteria for the class of 2026 through 2023. So ELA passing score was a 472, is now a 486, which brings it up to pretty much the same standard as math. In science, the passing score was a 467 and it's now a 470.
Mr. Gowan, can you just explain on the left-hand side what EE, ME, what those information stand for? And then it'll be, make it a little bit easier to read across.
Yeah. So EE is exceeding expectations and that's kind of the top, the old advanced criteria that the state used to use in the MCAS. And then ME is meeting expectations, PME is partially meeting expectations and ME is not meeting expectations. So you can see on all four, we're significantly higher than the state in percentage of students meeting those top two tiers and lower in the bottom two tiers. So in when you talk about the new scoring criteria and kind of just taking our data from this past year and last year's class and looking at it, if we applied it to the new scoring criteria, it would impact less than 2% and less than 3% of our student population who's taking MCAS. So while it was a kind of a big media frenzy, it really wouldn't have minimal impact here and our teachers are adjusting to what they need to do to prepare for that. So our departments all look very closely at the data and in their PLCs and in their team meetings and so forth, they really kind of pour through everything. Just to kind of break it down a little bit, as far as ELA goes, they've increased their percentage of students. We've increased our percentage of students exceeding expectations from 2022. So you can see the difference with that there. Our teachers in ELA are taking the time to review essay questions that the students have on MCAS and go through the questions that were asked on the previous test and then apply similar questions to the current work that they're doing in class. They've gone back to their assessments, specifically midterms and so forth, and have modeled those after MCAS and what a student may experience when they get to MCAS in the spring. So that students have a little more experience with that. And as the test gets closer, our ELA teachers are focusing in on some of the previous questions that the state has used in MCAS so the students can kind of know what to expect. They're getting into practice tests online so they can experience the platform and really doing everything they can to help prepare them for it. Our math scores in both meeting and exceeding expectations rose this past year. And math has hired recently a Title I tutor, provides additional supports to our students who need it. Our science, the bottom chart there, those percentage, the percentage of students exceeding expectations did drop in 22, but this is consistent also with the state in that particular area. And exceeding and meeting expectations both continue to do well above the state. Science has also created additional support for students who need it. There's a, we utilize our Canvas page for students who may need a retest or anything like that to kind of get some additional supports to prepare for any kind of science retest or, or even just the big test. So just a quick kind of summary, our teachers look at very closely the specific questions and where we are dipping a bit from year to year. So they'll take out the question, whether it's an essay question or anything like that, or a math question, a science question, and review that thoroughly to see where our grow areas are and also to see where our strengths are. And they take a good look at that to try to adjust the curriculum and the content so that our students are prepared for the upcoming test.
So maybe I can just add on to that, there's no single way that we'll do item analysis or analysis of our results to see where we need to grow. One pretty time-tested and effective way to do that is that our English, our Jane Beattar and our other leaders will look at item by item and even though we will out, our students will outperform the rest of the state on every item, there are questions where we won't outperform them by quite as much and wherever we're closer to the state on average, that's, that indicates an area where we can probably grow the most. So that's usually where we will identify the areas that we need to spend the most time with our teachers to shore up some weaknesses and, and work on that with our students. We'll do that in English, we'll do that in science, we'll do that in math. And that's a way to just continually make progress.
Yeah, and I think our use as a district with the program with analytic view will help with their kind of dissecting that data too. Not all of them have all the access to DESI's data that like someone on the department chair level or administrative level may have. So I think the analytic view will help them to kind of see some of that data a little more closely as well. And lastly, this was really neat to see, our top two tiers for students, which isn't necessarily in this chart, our top two tiers exceeding expectations and meeting expectations for specifically a sub-population of students with disabilities rose significantly in all three tests this year from last year. So that was great to see and that just speaks to the work our student support department does with their students as they prep for, for MCAS.
Questions?
Can I just point out a couple, a couple of things? If you go back to the AP testing, so one, one important thing to note is the college readiness. So students who score three or higher in particular is a strong predictor of a student's ability to persist in, in college. So I think that's, that's very important, the next slide. And then if you look at college readiness benchmarks on ACT and you look at English reading and science compared to the college readiness benchmarks, again, far above what the benchmarks are. And that's a great predictor of success in college-level courses. And next slide, with ACT, with SAT college readiness benchmarks is 480 for ERW and math is 530. And if you look at ours, again, well above. Students who do choose to attend college after Algonquin find great success in college. And this is just some data to support that the work teachers are doing, Algonquin is doing is really supporting students well.
Yeah, I mean, all this data is commendable, right? It's like we're, we're a high-performing school, it's always great to see this amazing data and especially what you just mentioned, the students with disabilities and all that achievement. That's what we want to see, that's what we're here for and thank you for that. If we could just go back to the AP testing data, because what I see, when I look at that slide, is yes, now we've gone down to 424 students, which is like 40 less than two years ago when we had 468 students, but our number of exams has gone up dramatically. And so I correlate that to be, and our scores go down, so why are so many kids taking so many tests? Because we're always constantly, constantly talking about stress. And yes, it's important to be college-ready, but I don't think we have to take four and five AP, you know. Cass, I'm talking to you. It's okay to not take all these AP exams in AP classes, you know? We, we just, the mentality about that, it's just, it's okay to take two a year and not four or five. And I just.
That number jumped, it pops.
Yeah.
And our guidance staff does an excellent job talking about balance and schedule. And with, when they're talking through schedules with our students, it's a really good question. And, and I can speak at least on the adult side that our staff does really push for balance and schedule. And in some cases, it doesn't always happen, but in many cases, students do recognize that. Families recognize the need to keep that balance too.
Yeah.
A question is, I don't know how much of that, or if any, is a reflection of offering more AP courses that kids are just interested in.
We have not added lots and lots of new AP courses. So I do think it is a, just a kind of a societal and community-wide, just there's that appeal of AP and the brand, name recognition of AP as a standard of excellence in American public schools remains high and maybe is increasing even just reality.
I would just add, Sean, I think there's a lot, we can disaggregate this data and actually come back with, you know, what AP courses are offered, how many students are taking the various APs, how many are sophomores, juniors and seniors, how many are taking three or more. So I think that'd be really good data.
I think it is good data. Kathy, can you get on that?
So there's a whole, you know, we have a lot of disaggregated data that we could share with the committee to really get a better picture of what this is.
To look at because it's, yeah, because it's. Yeah, I think that would be interesting to look at because it's, yeah, because it's especially for if they're spread out, you know, versus all taking them in one year and so forth.
Kathy may be able to speak to a little bit with the AP.
Yeah, I'm wondering, there's two things that I'm wondering about. I think students now have to sign up for the test by November and I think that changed the mechanism that students don't necessarily know where they're going to be attending school so that they need to sign up for that test because they're not sure where they're going to attend, will want the AP test or not, so they're trying to make sure that they do that. And I think when seniors look at it, they also know if they take the AP test, they do not have to take a private exam in that class.
Yes, and not totally related to that, but related to our other data on course enrollments. Our course enrollments in most of our APs are healthy in the 15 to 24 range and our enrollments in some of our niche elective courses that we really are excited about, but are not APs, struggle a little bit. So that's where you get your lower numbers and so that definitely is, I think, the lived experience that you're describing and that's, I think that's the reality of our school currently and we're not alone in that. I think you've spotlighted something there.
Isn't that a case-by-case basis though? I mean, I don't think you can make a blanket statement that nobody should take more than two APs at a time or something like that.
There are schools that have made, you know, dictated, students can't take more than two in their sophomore year or in three in their, you know, they'll make those, often it's driven by a concern for student stress and that's, that's their stress and the school make a kind of a push to make that decision for students, that's just not something we've done.
And there are students who take no AP courses and are college-ready.
Right.
And that's, that's a bigger story. It's not about because they're taking AP, they're college-ready or because they took the SAT. It's the comprehensive experience Algonquin provides students, all students, that makes them college and career-ready. So again, this is, this is one part of the story.
Yeah, and I mean, again, all the data's amazing, we're great, it's awesome. It's just, that concerns me, that's all. Because we always talk about stress, right? And I, yeah.
Look at that compared to the last Metro West survey, it's just, you know.
And, and you know, when we talk about those wellness days too, I mean, you think about this AP curriculum, it's, you can't take a break from that, you know? And so that's hard, so.
I do have to say, for me personally, I think the school has set me up really well for the APs I have and am taking and I think for a lot of students, it turns out to be sort of a natural progression based on your interests. There are people that certainly load up, but I think when you look at the data, you can see it's, it is, I mean, a little bit more than doubled based on the number of exams, but I think there's a lot of people that are really interested in a lot of different subjects. I'm taking like a language one and then an English one and then, you can, they can take multiple that are very different and you can feel comfortable in. I think teachers do a great job of pairing students and guidance counselors really do a great job of recommending them. I think also in general, the homework that I'm receiving as a student, that I think is common for many, is for math, it's more of like an everyday, like you get a couple pages of work and then for most other classes, including my AP classes, I don't see that kind of heavy workload or stress and I'm really enjoying mine, so.
Thank you.
Cass, I'm sorry, is your experience, would you say your colleagues, your peers feel similarly?
Yeah, I definitely know, I have two friends I think that are taking six AP classes each and.
That's crazy.
They are both having so much fun and even though they're strapped, it's a lot, it's sciences that are double blocks, you get a lot of extra time support there and then in general, I think that people who have set themselves up well through like the education that we have and have taken advantage of extra support from teachers over time and are really curious about things can do really well and succeed in a number of circles.
Kathy?
I have something.
Kathy? I think maybe there's a contrast to those who take AP classes in language arts versus in the sciences, you know, and take AP calculus. I, I never has sounded like a jolly-go there. But I wanted a clarifying question, did the college board move the dates into?
Yeah, like it used to be, like almost February or March and I can know.
Right, so could it be that because colleges, some colleges are no longer requiring SAT boards that, that they, from a marketing standpoint, it sounds really smart to have moved it to November?
I, I think, yes.
To just hedge your bet?
And I would have that. And I think too, when you think about if a parent doesn't know where they're going to send their child and they have the potential of not having to pay for a class in the future, I wouldn't you pay that money?
I also think it's early in the course and kids don't always know how they're doing in the course and so they sign up for it, whereas when the signups were later, kids were making decisions about whether they signed up sometimes based on how they were doing in their course and that is not an option really.
Right, that's not.
And by then you can start, if you like, if you opt out by like April 1st, or it used to be, you can get your money back.
To me, I thought it was just a total money grab by AP college boards.
I think we can look through it through that lens and it's, and it stands up very robustly from a marketing lens, but then if you look through the child development lens, it really doesn't stand up well.
Yeah.
You know, that, like in The Race to Nowhere film, there was a lot of pressure by the college boards on the colleges and those reps were coming out and suggesting you need to take these four or five classes and, and I do think that looking at it through a money lens helps clarify the mission. I, you know, it's caused tremendous stress and, and I just think that being multi-dimensional and reviewing it is considerate. Matt?
I'm not saying what I'm going to say, something to contrast with what the view of students taking too many AP classes. I guess what I wonder is, bringing it back to the student, each, Paul's here, the individual student plan is probably the priority and understanding with our guidance counselors, what is the objective of the student and the family as to where their child would like to either go to college or not and AP classes, like, I don't know, use the example, UMass Amherst, highly competitive business school. If you want to go to UMass Amherst, do you need to take the AP classes? If the goal is to get to UMass Amherst and it essentially requires it, then you want to guide the student to take those classes, if that's your goal. If that's not the goal, then you might guide them against that. At some point, the students need to take AP classes, probably comes back to what is the goal of where they'd like to go to college. And I, but I guess the data that I don't know is here is how does all this line up against the types of colleges that are out there, like Ivy League schools are things? What's the goal? Do you need them or not? If you don't need them, maybe we guide against it. If you do need them, it's, it's a reality of how do you get into school? I think, I don't know, maybe, I don't know a lot, but.
Yeah, I, I think what you're striking on is getting into college has gotten more competitive and a way to differentiate, students try to differentiate themselves to make their high school experience more competitive to match that and I just think it is a competitive atmosphere and AP has, for better for worse, been the differentiating feature or families view it as such. I don't, I don't think this is a guidance department big heavy push, it, that's not my impression. And I don't know what other schools of our similar caliber, I'm suspecting they, this would be very similar, these dynamics would be at play.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't mean to say it's a push from guidance. I think it's a responsibility of guidance at some point to say to a student's family, what do you want? When a parent says, when someone, maybe they don't get into coming out of eighth grade and they don't get the option to go into honors class and parents, well, I want my child in honors classes, okay, well, what's, what's the goal? What are we trying to achieve? And then, and some push, either you push them against it because they're not.
Matt, I think.
Skills yet or?
I think you're talking about pathways really and again, what's the goal and what are the pathways to achieve those goals for students? And I think that's really important and the pathway for some students to achieve goals could be taking APs and other students to achieve the pathway of a student, might not. And I think that's an important part of the planning and the guidance and the work that we do with students is what are your goals? What are the family's goals? And really identifying that path early on so that they can achieve the goals outlined successfully.
And I was just going to say that I think that the whole honors piece is part of this conversation also, because this conversation comes up as people make choices about CP versus honors and it's very hard to sort out perception versus reality in terms of the way decisions are made and teachers are often advising one way and then there's the whole debate about overrides by families and I hear this conversation across many departments of, you know, and everybody defines success in different ways to Greg's point of, for some people, they would like a more rigorous class and it's okay to have a lower grade. For others, it's, you know, not going to be acceptable. So it's, I think it's not just an AP conversation, but it's a sort of about pathways and, and the different levels and, and then.
It starts at the middle school and that's where Michelle Kaelin can also help to really, really think about, have those conversations with families and students at the middle school level, like what, what are the goals, you know, how do we, how do we start at the middle school level and really think about how do we get there? So it's conversations that, you know, Stephanie is having with our middle school teams and, you know, it's feedback we've received from parents, that many parents arrive as freshmen not quite aware of, of some of the decisions that happen at the middle school really impact the trajectory at the high school level. So again, we're talking about a couple topics that could be whole school committee presentations, which I think are important to have.
And it's also community education, because we also have situations where, that we were just discussing recently, where parents will come into the high school and make the decision to even have their child repeat something to be at the honors level rather than sort of push forward at a CP level. And so there's a lot of different incentives at play for people and so this is also about parent education and conversation as well.
Within the parent education, I asked when I was guesting in a class here recently, what is a good school? And they said it has a low acceptance rate.
Oh, cheers, another thing.
And that, that was, that was it. And I was like, well, what about affordability? What about leaving without, what about having a nice campus? What about a great library? You know, that was where they were focused and they were feeling all of this pressure regarding, like that was the, you know, so I think that probably is a community conversation to have versus just with the kids, but I found that a surprising reaction and they were really just kind of dumbfounded listening to me say, you know, what about these other choices? They're like, oh, never thought about that. Yeah.
One thing that was brought up, I just want to talk about again, is first the GPAs and then also to Mr. Desens' point about the college board being a money grab, I wonder if it's in Algonquin's future to expand the GPA scaling to have more advanced type courses that aren't necessarily AP but with all the same scaling that are typically setting where just an advanced course in different subjects that we, the college board does not cover at the time? I wonder if that could be a way to take down some pressure with APs as well while still providing them with the goals they want and the pathways and help them to follow.
Yeah, weighting in GPA is definitely a conversation a lot of highly competitive high schools are having and that's something we talked about internally and the school I came from had a similar, what you're suggesting that, in fact, it kind of went in the other direction where APs weren't more weighted than honors classes and it had the effect, I think that you're suggesting that it would enhance the appeal of honors classes and students wouldn't feel the compulsion to enroll in an AP class as a result.
Okay, moving on to enrollments.
Right, in your packet is the enrollment report, no significant variations to report to the committee and we are monitoring enrollment very closely with the class size presentation that Kathy Carmaniani presented. It is part of the budget conversations as we move forward to make sure that we're making decisions using the enrollment data and also looking at how we can maximize the resources that we do have on staff.
General fund.
So I'll turn it over to Kathy.
So the monthly general fund report as of November 30th had $575,351 or 2.16% remaining. So we are down a percentage from the previous month's monthly general fund report where we had 3.13% remaining. There are two reasons for that change, the first being, I think you may recall, last month, we did mention that we had encumbered $150,000 in the operational budget for any potential cost overruns or additional projects that needed to be done as a result of the athletic complex. So we have set aside $150,000 and that's reflected in this bottom line. And then also there was a change to the salary guidance line. We had two departures from that department and so we had unencumbered those funds and those positions have since been rehired. So just those two lines really account for that difference in the bottom line.
I make a motion to accept the monthly general fund expenditure report until audited for November.
Seconded. Moved by Chris, seconded by Matt. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Stephen review.
Okay. So during the month of November, we did receive North Bros December 1st assessment payment. I also want to point out in the second section, the charter school tuitions, you'll notice that in November, we received $44,545. In previous months, we were receiving $3,714. So really that amount represents what we had anticipated receiving for the entire year. We have reached out to Desi to find out why there was such a variance. We are waiting, awaiting their response and once I have more information, I will inform the committee. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that our investment income continues to come in higher than we had anticipated. Our district treasurer, Chris Teague, really does watch our interest rates and she works with our bank to make sure that she is maximizing our interest rates. And so as a result, we have revised our investment income to reflect the increased receipt. So we've already far exceeded what our initial.
Good work.
Yeah, 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 that was the, the easiest thing I've done all year. So those are just a few highlights on the revenue report.
I'm only familiar with charter school money going outwards, like, you know, for when students go to charter schools from our district, so.
We do, we do receive funds to help supplement the tuitions that we are paying. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a bit of a surprise, so.
Well, it's not, it's not a bit of, it's not been, it was the way charter schools were set up.
Yeah.
In Massachusetts in order to kind of appease the variability of like you lose a certain number of kids, but that doesn't mean you necessarily can change your staffing, but it has not always been a funded mandate. Like so they have promised it, but not always delivered on it, is my understanding. I don't know for this district.
Because we're a region, we receive charter school money pre-K through eight, the town receives the charter money, so we see it because we're the region.
Got it, got it, got it. Go to the chapter seven, okay.
All right.
In your packet is the FY, anything else?
Have to vote that?
Do we have to vote that?
We usually vote that.
I'm hoping we accept the statement of revenue as of November 30th, 2023 until audited.
Seconded.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Sean. Any questions, discussion? Okay.
I was ready to vote.
Okay, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. All right, budget priorities.
So in your packet are the FY '25 budget priorities and as presented in the primary budget presentation. Also in your packet is the FY '25 budget calendar, so it's a running record of key budget milestone dates, so Cheryl Lepre does a great job of keeping that document updated. And also in your packet is a document, intermunicipal agreement. We heard a lot about updates on the athletic complex project this evening. I'll briefly kind of review. I'll briefly kind of review those quickly. The amphitheater is hopefully going to be completed by the end of December. We're still waiting for some news around the press box, but once that is approved, it basically is an onsite delivery, drop-in place, and we're good to go. The bleachers are 90% complete. We're waiting for a few materials and we're anticipating being completed with phase one of the project by the end of December. So we, we will be in great position to have a grand opening this spring. We also are working with RGB, the architects for the amenities building, which is phase two. We are anticipating to go out for a bid the first of the year, and we hope to have a contractor and construction firm working on retrofitting the amenities building to include additional restrooms and to reconfigure where the, where the windows are for sales of, I'm losing the word, what's the?
Concessions.
Thank you. My brain shuts down at nine. Some would say earlier. So again, we're, we're on target with our athletic complex and we'll provide updates and lead ahead to the committee. Also in your packet is the intermunicipal agreement. So this agreement really deals with the CPC in Southborough, funding Southborough's portion of the tennis court. Northborough's CPC elected not to fund the tennis courts. The IMA is due to the fact that we're not following our regional agreement around how we're dispersing the costs of assessments for that portion of the project. The intermunicipal agreement basically allows Southborough to pay its share using CPC funds and then will bond the remaining amount for the community of Northborough. They'll be assessed and they can determine how they pay its portion. So this basically allows the school committee to work outside of the regional agreement. This will need to go before the select boards in Northborough and Southborough and also receive approval. We've had conversations with both select boards, so they are aware of this. And before you is, is the document that outlines the agreement that has been developed by bond counsel and been reviewed by our financial advisor. So we would like the committee to vote the IMA and also before we leave this evening, also sign the IMA if it's the will of the committee.
I just, I just have a question. Does that mean that the tennis court has been kind of separated and pulled out of the project as a whole? So it's?
Just, just the, how it's being assessed. So it's part of the 7.9 million minus the CPC contribution from Southborough and then it takes the remaining for Northborough and distributes it in a way that is fair. The only other way we can do it is, is have a part of the assessment that's not fair to Southborough.
Any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion? To, do I hear a motion to approve the towns of Northborough and Southborough and the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District intermunicipal agreement?
So moved.
I saw Paul's lips moving. Moved by Paul, seconded by Matt. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
So we have a special patent where we can come in off.
Right now, and full business.
So in your packet is also the FY '25 capital plan. As was discussed at last meeting, we did develop a five-year capital plan and really distributed the capital projects across the five years. What I've included in the packet is a draft warrant, approximately $400,000 of capital projects in the FY '25 year to be accomplished. So it's the redundant domestic hot water boiler, the boiler number one blower motor, the glycol in the heating loop, lighting controls, and the failed RTU number 10, which is in the guidance area. So that sum is $391,000. This is just draft language. My recommendation is to vote it closer to town meeting, so it does go to town meeting for approval or disapproval of the debt assessment. Some more information at this point.
I want to ask one question.
Sure.
You don't have to answer it today, but maybe as we get closer. What happens if, if we put the warrant out for 391, if any one of these projects becomes greater than?
So the school committee would vote to approve this. And then that would initiate sending that information to the towns, and then the towns would have 60 days to approve or disapprove of this. They don't get to vote on specific items within this. It's either all or nothing.
Were you asking like, if a project came like instead of 70,000?
Maybe the collection of them all, somehow.
So the school, so the way it works, the school committee will, because you are, you are an entity, you get to vote to approve these, either all or one or none, but it's the school committee who gets the side. And then the towns have to decide whether they're going to disapprove or approve the assessment. It's, it's a little bit different. It's similar to the athletic complex project moving forward. Is that accurate?
Policy development and distribution, none at this time. Audience sharing, none at this time, because there's no audience. Anyone from the table? Nope. Okay. Personnel, distribution of personnel report is in your packet. Communications, none at this time. Google bills and payrolls, leave you online. Agenda items for next month, guidance department presentation, multi-language learner data and presentation, FY '25 recommended budget presentation. Does anybody have any other requests, suggestions? And any other business which may legally come forward, committee? So in case you don't now, we can always do it then. All right. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Sean. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, we are adjourned.